Can we sit down?
I only want to do it once.
I wouldn't be mean.
No, I know. This chair is a problem. I have a chair that's a problem.
All right, meeting called to order. This is the September 30th, 2025. Mayor and Council meeting. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn no later than 10:00 p.m., unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
Thank you. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilor Pigmatelli, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you.
Aye.
(inaudible)
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Kamala.
Here.
Council President Slusinski.
Here.
Councilman McCann.
Here.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
Councilman Salianni.
Here.
Councilman Talamini.
Here.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have a presentation of certificates for the 10U US ABL baseball team. Coach Martin Rubenacker, Coach Brad Siegel, Coach Ryan Marchini, Coach Jason Silverstein, and Coach, I got the last one here. Jay Bertowski. All right, first of all, thank you, Coach. Thanks for all the hard work. I mean, this is really important for the Borough of Oakland, for all the hard work that you do working with these children. At this time, I'd like you to introduce your team and how we got here.
All right, today, we're here to honor the 10U baseball team, undefeated, 12-0, after all said and done. You know, a so-so spring, an outstanding summer, that the summer of '25, hopefully, these boys will never forget. And I know I won't, and lasting memories forever. Good job, boys.
Tell me if you can come up and just make a line here.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, first one up, Tank Daniels. Here you go, that's for you, bud. He's shaking their hands. Matty G. There you go, bud. Chris McCollins. Brady. Arthur Resto. Connor Rowan. Kyle Rubenacker.
Justin says congratulations.
Max Siegel. Jake Silverstein. And Mateo. All right, we got a picture?
We got a picture.
Go in front of us. In front.
All the way there.
Down. Want to hold over one, too?
Yeah, we're still one.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Good day, like the third inning?
All right.
Bottom of the fourth.
All right, meeting called back to order. Okay, at this point, I'm up to the mayor's report. So we got a lot of public works projects going on at this particular time, especially in October, it's gonna be a busy month. We have water main replacements that are gonna be taking place on West Oakland Ave, down to the Pump and Lakes border. We have sewer relining of pipes in the Academy Circle, West Sheffield, and Oak Crest Condos areas, that's gonna be taking place in the month of October. The flood buyout program, as you know, we've got abandoned houses, part of the flood buyout program on Lenape Lane and Roosevelt Boulevard. Expect to see those houses coming down in the next couple of weeks. Also, don't be surprised if you see the fire department and/or police or EMS, they're gonna be training on the houses while they're still standing. Patriots Way Bridge update. As you know, at the previous council meeting, we had approved a change order for test pits. I'm happy to announce it on September 19th. The contractor did come in, and they did dig test pits to determine where the underground utilities are located. Since then, the engineer has been working with contractor with a new design, and we expect the contractor to come back on site this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They will be putting in the crash attenuator on the 202 side, and they were putting guide rail in from the bridge up to the walkway, and from the walkway up, they're gonna be putting in some barrels. If we can get all this work done, we're hoping to have a soft open on the bridge, and then in the next several weeks, they'll finish the rest of the guide rail. So we're real close. Just so everybody knows, we are still several months ahead of schedule on this, even though we're kinda stuck with this hiccup here. Yoppo Avenue, expect to see work on Yoppo Avenue. I know we've had the signboards out there, it's gonna be starting next week. That includes drainage work at the bottom of Raridan Road, and Yoppo, that's gonna be followed by sidewalk and concrete work down by the Krausers, and also on the mall side, and going up Yoppo, and it's gonna be a full milling repay from Yoppo from 202 all the way up to McCoy Road. So that's probably gonna take a better part of a month, month and a half to get that job done. Want to remind everybody that Fire Prevention Week is upon us in the month of October. The fire department will have their open house on October 6th at 7:00 p.m. down at the Yoppo Firehouse on Yoppo Avenue. That's also where they held their poster contest. It's really an opportunity for you to come down, bring your family down, it's a nice event. You see some demonstrations, the kids will have a chance to play with some of the hoses, and there will be some light refreshments. Oakland Market, we have two days in October, one is October 11th from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. And also, they now have a night market on October 25th from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. We've also received calls about public service doing gas main work up by the Chuckanut area. We are aware of the inconvenience that is causing the residents, it has been brought to our attention, so we are gonna be asking public service to be more, how should we say, compliant when it comes to dealing with shutdowns of the roads, and giving residents proper notification in the event that they have to shut the road. And with that said, that concludes my report. Do you have a motion open to public?
Uh huh.
Second. Any person in the public wish to address the governing body?
Hi, Albing the Roll, 137 High Water Boulevard. I have a few questions, if you don't mind. I'm a little upset that the town.
Engineer.
Engineer is not here, because he could add to one of them. So I know we did the decommission of the three sewer treatment plants in town, right? Now we did, we have three new pumping stations, is that correct? Were there any new homes or commercial added to those new pumping stations?
Mr. Kuntz? No. No.
Will there be?
That remains to be seen.
Till when? Because, not to be, I had several conversations, and I have several emails from Mr. Boswell telling me there will be, and this is going on three years now, and I have an email from him telling me personally that my house is in the sewer treatment area, pumping area, and I will hook up.
I know where you are.
Right.
Yep.
And I'm right there.
Right.
And this is three years now, and I spoke to Mr. Kuntz several times on that, and I'm still waiting, so. And then I asked him, I said, "Well, what do I do with my septic? Do I replace it?" He said, "Do not do any such thing, you will be hooked up to it." So I'm still waiting, and nothing.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, I live across from the firehouse, you know that.
Yep.
Do we need these sirens to sound like 1940 Poland anymore? It's a joke. They're blowing these things at 8:30 on Sunday morning, nobody shows up, and then on Sunday night, all of a sudden, you see all the volunteer firemen show up, and the siren didn't go off. So obviously, the beeper system, or whatever they use, I don't know, and again, I'm not mocking the volunteers, God bless them, they leave their families to go help us, it's beautiful. We don't need these sirens, in my opinion. I'm there, I see it all the time. So Sunday morning, it rings, nobody shows up. Sunday night, it doesn't ring, they're all there. So that's another thing, we have to work on that. I think we're the only town that does that, so I'm just curious about that. Now, I have another issue, I spoke to Councilman McCann about, my wife and myself received a letter from the Department of Water stating we owe seven cents. If we do not pay this seven cents, within 30 days, they will put a lien on my house and auction off my property. I went down there with my seven cents and the letter, with all my receipts, not me, my wife, God bless her, she's a good accountant, with the receipts, everything, they said they received one of our payments on July 24th instead of July 21st. I said, "Okay, why couldn't you just add the seven cents to my next bill?" "Oh, no, if this went out automatically, it cost eighty cents to mail it." A stack of papers to do it, obviously, we printed it ourselves, so it had, let's just say, it cost a dollar for seven cents. That's not smart. It doesn't make any sense, and I'm not the only one who got this. So something you should all look into, I appreciate it. So I voiced what I had to say, I appreciate you all listening, and if you could get back to me on this sewer situation, Mr. Kuntz, I know I spoke to you 100 times, you and I, and.
Three times, three years ago.
Yeah, it's going on two years, right? Okay, so there you go.
We'll get clarity.
I appreciate it. Thank you, you guys are doing a great job, because by nobody being here, shows you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
I'm going to watch the Yankees. Take care.
Thank you for your time.
All right, do we have a motion to close?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, we're up to approval of minutes, September 9th, 2025. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any changes? Not seeing any? Roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
Yes.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
All right, I got executive minutes from September 9th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any comments or changes? Not seeing any? Roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
Upstate.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
And Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
All right, we have the following special analysis, or points to raffle licenses. First one is to authorize weekend work on. That's what I'm doing.
Oh, you go right to raffles, these are discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Just make sure you're listening.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we have two requests to work on weekends, number one is for McDonald's, and the second one is for weekend work for 445 Rample Valley Road, that's the property which is right next to the Exxon.
But.
Discussion?
Yes.
Sir?
They want to start at seven?
Yeah.
Well, that's what they asked for.
You have the right to, certainly, in the discretion, to modify that, or put conditions on the approval.
But what type of work is it?
So for McDonald's, what they had informed us of was general construction, so there's a building to building. And for 445, Garden State Builders, sort of the opposite, miscellaneous site work, to prep for their hardscape landscaping, paving, and the like.
I think, I thought we said, our early starts wouldn't start before eight.
We can make it eight o'clock.
Was it eight or nine, Rich?
It's been nine.
It's been nine, yes. It's been nine?
It's been nine.
It should be nine. The McDonald's is right on 287.
Yeah.
Why can't they start, why can't they start at five o'clock in the morning? No. I don't live that far away from them. You know.
I'm more concerned about the property around the other road.
Well, let's do these one at a time. Let's do McDonald's first. Do we have a motion on McDonald's, what a time, start time?
9:00 a.m.
No, I think that's too late. What time did you say, 10?
9:00 a.m.
Or 9:00?
I say eight.
Eight o'clock? Anybody else? I'll do eight. Got two for eight? Anybody else?
I'll do eight.
You got three eights?
Three eights, two nines.
Who else?
And then a boat.
John?
7:30.
So it looks like you got three for eight for an eight o'clock start on authorized weekend work for McDonald's. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor? All right.
All right.
All right, let me do a roll call.
We'll do the roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
No.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
No.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
No.
And Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
We have a tie.
All right, eight o'clock it is, yes. All right, next one we have is authorized weekend work for 445 Rample Valley Road. Councilman Pigmatelli?
9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
Anybody else? 9:00 a.m.?
Nine.
Would you like to make the motion, Mr. Pigmatelli?
Make a motion that 445 be 9:00 a.m.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
No.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, very good. All right, we're up to, well, do this as a consent agenda, authorized raffle license RL 1561 for the Sports Association of Oakland for October 11th for a 50-50, in support of recreational football and cheer at Rample Indian Hills High School. Next one we have is authorized raffle license RL 1562 for the Life Raff Group on November 20th for a poker night in support of persons with gastroentatystomy, stromatotumors, and other rare diseases at the Oakland Cubs Club. Authorized raffle license RL 1563 for the Indian Hills PAC on October 19th, 2025 for a 50-50 in support of Indian Hills High School softball. We've got authorized raffle license RL 1564 for Camp YDP on October 25th for a tricky tray in support of Camp YDP programming and budget at Porta Bellas at 175 Rample Valley Road. Authorized raffle license RL 1565 for Camp YDP on October 25th, 2025 for a 50-50 in support of Camp YDP at Porta Bellas, in support of the Gary Sinise Foundation and Knights of Columbus. That's all we have. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
Yes.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
Did I get, I'm sorry, did I get 1, 6, 5, 6, 6?
You said the Knights of Columbus, I think you kind of combined them.
Yeah, I did, yep, okay. All right, good, very good. All right, we're up to resolutions. We have the following resolutions, 25272, resolution authorizing recreation refund, 25273, authorized refund pollinator plant cell, Natalie Brock, 25274, authorized refund of arts fair fee for duplicate payment, 25275, authorized auction awards, 276, authorized agreement to conduct electronic tax sale, 277, award contract to Boswell Engineering for West Oakland Ave water main improvements, 278, award contract to Boswell Engineering for Yoppo Avenue Construction Inspection Services, 279, resolution authorizing advertising for year 2026, RFQs for professionals, 25280, resolution authorizing change order number six, Patriots Way Bridge Guide Rail, 281, authorized change order number four for Pacific Construction, 282, authorizing affidavit of discharge of tax lien, and 283, authorized grants to middle Walmart. Anybody wish to point it out?
Yes, 277 and 278.
Anybody else? Not seeing any? Do we have a motion to approve? Consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
One second. Which ones were pulled out?
We pulled out 77 and 78.
Yeah, the.
Everything except 77 and 78.
Yes.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
Okay, 25277, Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yeah, I mean, we're awarding it to Boswell Engineering because they're our water engineers, is that correct?
Correct, and they handle the design for the project.
Okay, all right, I'm okay with that, then. The next one, did we get any other proposals for inspection? And why not? If we did?
No, again, because they were under contract to do the design, and we're familiar with the project scope, helped us with the grant with DOT as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay.
Any further questions?
No.
All right, I wish to introduce 25277, a contract for West Oakland Ave water main improvements.
All introduced, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
Upstate.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
All right, we're up to 25278, award contract Boswell Engineering for Yoppo Avenue Construction Inspection Services, who wishes to introduce?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Pigmatelli, roll call.
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
Upstate.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
All right, we're up to ordinance, we have one ordinance for introduction tonight. It's an ordinance amending chapter 8-3 of the Borough Code regarding cannabis licensing, and this change has to do with penalties for operating without a license. Do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Mr. Salianni, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Rose. Roll call for introduction?
Council President Slusinski.
Yes.
Councilman McCann.
Yes.
Councilman Pigmatelli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose.
Yes.
Councilman Salianni.
Yes.
Councilman Talamini.
Yes.
All right, final adoption will be on October 14th with public hearing. That concludes our ordinance, nothing on work session, does anybody have any new business? Not seeing any. Anybody have any old business? Not seeing any. Committee reports will start down on the left, Ms. Rose.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Arts Committee met on Thursday, September 25th. Outdoor Market is continuing through October, next one is scheduled for October 11th from 10 to 3:00. Access for All, the Trunk or Treat is scheduled for October 25th at 9:00 a.m. This is an excellent event for those with special needs. Cars will be decorated, and there will be plenty of candy and goodies to hand out. Shade Tree Committee's next meeting is Monday, October 6th at 7:30, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Slusinski?
Thank you, Mayor. From the library, the full library activities resume with preschool storytimes every week on Tuesdays at 11:00 a.m., Tots Library Club every Thursday at 10:30, and a musical program on Fridays at 11:00 a.m. This coming Friday is the toddler dance party, and next Friday is the fantastic Jiggly Wiggly program with Ms. Christina. Parents and caregivers need to register for the Friday programs in advance, but the regular weekly storytimes do not require registration. Although it's not till November, the OPL would like me to announce the 2025 Trunk Day will be Saturday, November 8th from 12:00 to 2:00. For young adults, they have the weekly Switch 2 Gaming meetup on Mondays at 4:00. The library provides the systems and the games, but kids are free to bring their own along as well, and play cooperatively with others. If you don't have the new system, it's a great way to check it out. They also have the Anime Club this Friday at 3:45. You don't need to sign up for either of these programs. On Monday, the 6th, at 10:00 a.m., they have Favorite Foreign Films with a showing of Miss Palfrey at the Claremont. This event is open to all, and the film's viewing will be followed by an optional discussion over coffee. And lastly, Yoga with Sonia begins again in October on the 7th at 6:00 p.m., and will be weekly on Tuesdays through the month. Registration is required, sign up by calling the library, or on the online calendar, on the website, under events. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That's one, McCann.
I just wanted, I'll defer most of my comments to you, Mayor, with regard to the Patriots Way Bridge. As you know, we've done site visits, tried to get the project along, it's way ahead of schedule, and it's within budget, and I think that's attributed to the hard work that you've put into this personally, that I've witnessed doing one of those site visits with you. I also want to thank Kevin Boswell for his ingenuity in trying to resolve some of these last-minute engineering problems that popped up with our contractors, so I'll defer the rest of those comments on that topic to you, sir.
Thank you. You're welcome. Councilman Salianni?
Let's meet you, man. So, public events, so to piggyback off Councilman Rose's update, the Trunk or Treat is October 25th. The lineup is 9:45 for the costume contest, so please, everyone, please everyone join, and it's a great day of event, we appreciate that. Also, on public events, just to let everyone know, we are going through, we keep going through our budget for what we're spending for next year, so we're looking at committees' recommendations, how we can improve some of our program for next year, and where best to focus our funds going forward. For the OCC, the Oakland, OCC update, Oakland Television, they're looking for nonprofits
Um, for the OCC, um, the Oakland, OCC update, Oakland Television, they're looking for nonprofits and businesses alike to show your support for Oakland TV by becoming a yearly sponsor. For a simple donation of $100 per year or $200 for a business, you can be a featured advertiser on the Oakland, on Oakland TV. Please reach out to Borough website or contact Charlene at Borough Hall for more details. Residents are encouraged to subscribe to Oakland TV's YouTube channel by searching at Oakland Borough on YouTube and be one of the over 600 subscribers following the Borough of Oakland. It's a major accomplishment to reach 600 subscribers, and a misfortune is our size, and I want, I want to congratulate the TV committee on this milestone. For comparison, I've been informed that Ramsey has 170 subscribers, Oradel has 193 subscribers, and Somerville has 38 subscribers, and Ridgewood has 491. This is a, this is a great accomplishment and great for, great for the team to get exposure to the community. If you want to be a part of an award-winning all-volunteer team, all committees are always looking for volunteers, so if you want to be part of the bulletin board committee, newsletter committee, television committee, or welcome website committee and social media committee, please contact myself or email OCC@Oakland-NewJersey.org to learn more about, learn more about each committee and what spots are available. The next and last OCC meeting of 2025 will be held Thursday, November 6th at 7:00 PM, right here in council chambers. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Pignotelli?
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, the 22nd of September, I met with the Board of Health, uh, to review all the reports, nursing report, registrar report, and the, uh, registered environmental health specialist report on, uh, environmental, uh, items and retail food items, no big issues then. Um, on, uh, November 6th, uh, will be the Environmental Commission meeting next week. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Talamini?
Uh, yes, so, uh, with the recreation, um, we have some sad news. Mike Guad, our chairman, will be stepping down. Uh, he's been there for 20-something years. Um, we've, uh, he's led our recreation through, uh, into the, uh, to be, to, he's led it to be a great, a great, great program. There's so many people move, move into this town because of our recreation, and, uh, I know, I know my family has enjoyed, uh, Oakland Recreation immensely, and it was in no small part due to, to Mike Guad, Nino. And, um, we'll, we'll miss him, but, um, like they say, nobody's, nobody's, uh, uh, we'll, we'll be able to move on, but, um, uh, we, we surely will miss him, and I just want to say, uh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to, to Mike for all the work that he's done. And then, on top of that, um, uh, I want to say, we just want to make sure that all the coaches that are coaching for the, the rec are certified, that they, they took the